... Civil condition. What is it, what they call it? Civil condition, my condition is... It's not assault.
Okay, we're about to get started. Commissioners, I've been told that if you would, please turn on your iPads that you have now. That's how you want to vote. So make sure they're powered up and ready to go, please. Sheriff.
Doctor Orton, please. The commission is now all permitted.
Thank you, sir. I would like to invite Mr. Chuck Hopkins up. He's from Goose Pond Community Church, sir. If you'll please give our invocation.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for each and every blessing that you have given us. Lord, you blessed us with a country that's free and where the citizens can have a voice and is a government by the people and for the people. Lord, as we gather here this morning, let us do, or this evening, let us think on that and dwell on that. And Lord, we ask for you to give us the grace and the mercy and the willingness to do what's right in your eyes and not what's right in the world's eyes. And I say these things in our Lord Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a... Just before we do the pledge, please. We want to, while we're in the invocation stage, I'd like to recognize Claude Morris, who's passed away. Great friend to all of us. Known him for thirty-five years. He was our greatest liaison from this county to A D C. Taught countless people how to shoot, shooting safety, how to be a veteran, how to hold himself. So before we say the pledge, because I want our cadets to lead us in the pledge, I would like for them to do a short ceremony to honor Claude. And then we'll do a moment of silence and then we'll move forward with the pledge. Commissioner Brown, if you'll bring him back in for the pledge in one minute, please, or less. Now, we'd please like to recognize a moment of silence on behalf of Commissioner Claude Morris. Amen. I know we all have terrific stories about him. We'll be sharing those in the future. Mr. Brown, if you'll bring your detail up and lead us in the invocation, please, or the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, soldiers. Roll call. We should have fifteen members present. Next order of business is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second? Forrest, properly seconded. Motion.
Some motions to amend.
Motion properly seconded. Commissioner Hirschman, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to delete item number eleven A from the agenda.
And I'll second that with a roll call vote, please.
May please, may please this commission, I would ask for discussion with regard to this specific motion. And I'll start with Commissioner Hirschman.
I'd like to remind everybody in the commission, as we were elected officials for our county and our districts, of each one of our districts, we were elected by the people of our county. And that's who we're supposed to be serving. I, I'd like to remind all of us that when we also became commissioners, we did our training with C Task. C Task asked us, when we vote on things, do you vote yes or you vote no? If you don't, if you don't vote for it and you abstain from a vote, that's a no vote. If everybody will remember that when we were trained. And I'm going to urge you to vote yes or no on this request. But I don't feel like that we need to drag things through the mud. And that's where I feel like this is happening.
Mr. Hirschman, with respect to you, I would call for a recess to speak with the full commission and the attorney-client within, within the attorney-client.
Point of order, the only, after this meeting has been convened, only the full legislative body can vote to recess.
Mr. Hunt, I would, I would make a motion recess.
You're not a member of this body.
Mr. Hunt.
Call of question.
For further matters with regard to specifically new business, section eleven A, I would ask that I meet with the full commission.
Your constituents can't hear you.
Oh.
Thank you.
I apologize. Do I need to push a button? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
With regard to section, well, eleven A, I would ask that I meet with the full commission within, well, in a, in an attorney-client setting. So I would ask for a brief recess.
I, I have a question. Haven't you already met with everybody?
Yes.
No, sir. No, sir.
We've already been called, we've already been, you've already brought it to question, is that correct? It's, it's been called to question already, so it's, it's ready to be voted on. Is that not correct, Joe? Thank you.
I would, I would like to, if I may, clarify that calling the question and ending debate requires two-thirds majority, is that correct?
No, sir.
Thank you. It does not require two-thirds.
No, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The, there's sort of a technicality here. Mr. Morris said question. So that means he's in favor of, of, of voting. And the, what you were mentioning was, if he had said, "I move the question," then that would have required a second and a vote on whether or not to end debate.
Questions before us, properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Voting on the amendment. Voting on the amendment, do we have any discussion? Commissioner Dee Ford.
Is the state comptroller here tonight?
A representative from the comptroller's office is here, yes.
So if this is removed from the agenda, we will not be able to hear what he has to say.
That is technically correct, unless he comes up public comments, but he does have information for us.
We're voting on an amendment to remove section eleven from the order.
Section eleven A, yes, from the agenda.
I'd like to remind all the commissioners, I, I was told last night that people that were watching our talk session last night, to make sure you push your microphone button, because they cannot hear anything that we say. So make sure you do that, please. And also, if you would, move up closer to the microphone, evidently back here does not work. So move up closer to the microphone, if you want, if you wanted to speak.
Any additional discussion? Call for a question, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of removing eleven A from the agenda signify by voting aye, those opposed, vote no.
Ask for it to be a roll call vote, please.
Technically, it's a roll call, sir, when it's displayed like this.
To clarify to the chair, are we doing like a vocal roll call vote or are we voting electronically?
Voting electronically, which is same as a roll call. Everybody votes individually.
Okay. And we vote yes to approve the amendment, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. Absolutely not. I wear two hats in Coffee County Government. One of them is Secretary of our County Planning Commission. The other hat is as an elected official in which I represent my district. And in, in full disclosure, I will be voting my conscience regarding the issue at hand as a county commissioner.
I have a question. Are we, this vote that we're voting, are we voting to remove item eleven A from?
From the agenda, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Duncan, you're still open, sir. Eyes yes, no four, motion carries. Next, we're approving the agenda in its entirety. That's what we're doing, yes, sir. The agenda in its entirety, we had a motion and a second on it. Do we have any discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion on approving the agenda? No discussion. Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed, vote no. Fifteen ayes, zero noes, motion carries, agenda is approved. Now, we're ready for public comments, we'll do a maximum of twenty minutes. I'm going to take the liberty to do the first one. Like to let some folks know how I was treated by somebody in here, and you can tell.
We'll just have to see, but, and I didn't know I had a confrontational meeting with Sam Edwards. We were, we were very kind to each other, but just the things that, you know, just him telling me because the law's never been tested, we could pretty much do whatever we want with it. I just, I'm going by the letter of the law.
Right.
And, and he had not even seen the Attorney General's opinion, and, you know, it's his livelihood and that thing's been out since March, so.
Yeah, he, the last time, in our last training session, I, I alluded to this issue slightly. I said, in the event that somebody does not obtain this training, which is TCA required, but they are still voting on issues, could that vote be challenged? He said, yes, and that was the end of it.
He told me that too. He said, could somebody go back, even if you reconstruct records and still challenge, yes. He said, will somebody challenge because you don't have the proper records? He said, yes. He did tell me that on the phone, too. And I said, you know, we just, I mean, Dennis, what would be the optics of us having a meeting and going back three years and, and saying, everybody's signing that they received that training?
I don't know that that would be appropriate.
And so I'm just trying, I'm sitting back being quiet, letting, answering the questions that are coming to me, one from Steve Cunningham, and that's it, call Sam Edwards, and I did. And I, I did what Sam said with regards to Steve, and just could let it...
What was his, what was his reasoning for firing Steve? I mean...
He, he said, he said, if it's your determination, he's not in compliance. He said, you can just terminate him. And he, and he said, I'll give you two different options to come into compliance. He said, one is to go back and reconstruct the records and the other is to fire everybody and start again. I said, we don't have to fire everybody, because two members still have till December thirty-first to certify the training they had this year. And I called Sammy and I called Rodney Duncan, I said, you know, you guys come in here and let me, let me take you to Kurt's office and let's do what we got to do. Get it, get your syllabus notarized, whatever it is, and then set up a system where every time the training's done, everybody has a syllabus attached to a sign-in sheet and we get it notarized. And then there's never going to be a problem.
Okay. And I promise you, whatever, whatever you decide I'm going along with.
Mr. Chairman.
Next public comment, please, two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask what Jed Clamp had had to do with this?
I thought this was public comment time, is it?
It is, ma'am.
Clarify, all right. My name is Jenny McKee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. What I have to say is very short, sweet, and to the point. Perfect timing, thank you, sir. My fear, commissioners, is that you assume that because our county is small, that we are stupid and we will stand by while shady, corruptive behavior, shady politics by our leaders goes on. Now, I'm here to tell you, Mr. Matheny, can you please look me in the face? Thank you, sir. Continue to look me in the face. Sir, you brought, I'm sorry, thank you, you brought my community of Beach Grove's name into your mouth in black and white and made your dumpster fire of administration public. And I'm fairly certain this room right here is all here to let you know we're willing to be loud and make it public-er. You're still not looking me in the face.
You've got one minute.
I'll, I'll use that time and wait until you give me the respect that I think that myself and everybody in this room deserves, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, you are being watched. Please conduct yourselves like you are earning or trying to earn. Please conduct yourselves like you are earning or trying to earn our vote. And it upsets me greatly, sir, that I'm here and I have to defend Dennis Hunt. Thank you.
My administration will not participate in unlawful activities or cook the books and training records.
I didn't say unlawful, I said shady, sir.
It's one or the other. It's black or white. It's unlawful. Yes, sir, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Quinn Sullivan. Some of y'all know me, some of you don't. I've had the pleasure of working with several of the commissioners for many years. Also, I'm one of the founder members of Save Coffey County TN, a grassroots organization that was formed about two years ago to help protect our county zoning laws and our county growth plan. It was formed out of necessity to keep interest group, private interest group, to come in our county and change our zoning laws so they come in work and do whatever they want in whatever district they want, especially spot zoning. We fought it and we won. And tonight, I'm here to ask, I watched a video, Mr. Mayor, last night. Question was never asked, why was only two members not serve the paperwork that they're going to be released from their duties?
Because they were both appointed this year and they both have until December thirty first of this year to be in compliance. That's exactly why.
And Mr. Anderson took the same training as the Planning Commission, the staff, Manchester and all. Yet, he did not get the paper, no termination paperwork. Why is that?
Who?
Mr. Anderson. He took the same training.
I know, but he has until December thirty first of this year, as I said, to properly be certified. He is not out of compliance yet. That's why.
But everyone of y'all got documentation that the Planning Commission did their training. It's held up on a technicality of a piece of paper that says their certified training has been done. That's it. That's what we're all talking about tonight. Mr. Mayor wants to release our Planning Commission. Why is that? He took his two appointees by the hand, went to Murfreesboro, got trained from a different entity.
Time's up, sir. Time's up, and one of the.
Can somebody yield their time to me? All right. So y'all went to Murfreesboro, got trained by a private entity that this county's never used. That's fine. Just like discussed last night, you got certification from an incredible institution.
You know what, sir? One of the appointees, Sammy Anderson, was his recommendation, Dennis Hunt, not mine.
I can't hear you, sir.
Dennis Hunt recommended Sammy Anderson, not me.
But you appointed him, did you not, sir?
The commission appointed him, sir.
They'll ratify him.
You got one minute.
All right. Even a blind man can see what's going on. The five members he wants to discharge, their, their vote on the Planning Commission cannot be influenced by the politics of our county. They're credible people. They've worked hard. I've worked with them for over sixteen years, most of them. I've seen a lot of them come and go off that commission. That's one thing I can say. They went by the book and proved them last night when Mr. Cunningham asked Mr. North, how many lawsuits? Was it three? Am I correct, sir? Only three. Two has been adjudicated, one still open. Is that correct?
Time's up, sir. It's, it's worth noting.
They yield their time to me, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll get you started in just a second. You know, here's what it is. Nobody doubts credibility of anybody on the Planning Commission. That's never been done. But the state law's been violated in how the records are kept, and that leaves us open to a great weakness. I've been to seven different counties, studied and studied and studied their growth plans. I've watched five mega sites be built in this state. I know where the mistakes are made. We have to prepare for this growth so we don't end up like Murfreesboro. We don't end up like Galveston.
That is correct, sir. That is correct.
Our Planning Commission has done nothing proactive to do this. They should have been out finding places for schools, corridors for roads, utilities out to underserved areas.
We disagree. We all disagree with you, Mayor. We got a growth plan. The Planning Commission goes by our growth plan and our zoning law. So we don't wind up like Rutherford County. Nobody here, think about it, commissioners. We choose to live in this county. We choose not to live in Rutherford County in that mess over there. There's a reason why we do live here. We don't want our county looking like Rutherford County. We don't want Manchester all jammed up like Murfreesboro. Our county has grown and will continue a natural growth. Look at Murfreesboro. They have infrastructure problems constantly. How they fix it? They raise taxes, property taxes.
They didn't plan properly either. Your two minutes is up. They did not plan properly.
Should I continue? Just give me the time and I'll shut up. Let me finish saying what I'll say, Mr. Mayor, and I'll sit down and let somebody else out the floor. We don't want Manchester looking like Murfreesboro. If we did, we would live there. We don't want higher property taxes. If we did, we'd move to Murfreesboro. Can't y'all understand this county don't want to be like Rutherford County?
We're trying to do the exact opposite of what you're saying.
But at the same time, our Planning Commission, they went by our growth plan, our zoning laws. Some of these probably need to be tweaked a little bit. However, they went by it and kept this county out of many lawsuits. And that's one from our organization itself. We have teams of lawyers, just like a lot of group does.
Two minutes, sir, is up.
I want to thank, I want to address, I'm going to ask, I got one more thing to say. I'm addressing all the commissioners. Tonight, where we should have voted tonight, we're asking the people of Coffey County, I'm asking y'all to vote to govern. Don't vote to be somebody's puppet. And this is what's going on. Look at the endless authority, what he's done with it, trying to dissolve it. This man won't hold power over our county. I say, no. Y'all are the power people. Y'all the ones that get to select and do what's right for the county, not the mayor. He can bring agendas to this floor.
Time's up, sir.
But y'all are the people in power to elect and select what's going on in our county. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I do not agree with your politics, and the people in this room and the rest of the county do not agree with your politics. The good old boys days are coming to an end. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Go ahead, ma'am. If you'll state your name, you have two minutes, please.
Sarah Bradley. I'd first like to say that it is a tremendous mistake to assume that because you are in a crowded room, that everyone is in agreement. I am appalled by what I have seen and heard from those opposed to this attempt to legitimize a planning commission that has not been in compliance with the plain language of a state statute that is really very, very simple to follow. It's like me giving a group of students some easy bonus work at the end of the semester. Write your name and the date and the title of the class and three things you learned today on a paper, and I'll give you a hundred points. If the instructor of this course is the purported expert on these matters, you'd think his sign in sheet would be in order.
Fifteen seconds.
Furthermore, please reject school budget agenda amendment for the services that we are awarding were not procured in compliance with TCA two, oh, sorry, forty-nine-two-four-oh-six, something like that. We got a real big problem around here with people in this room.
Time's up, please.
Thinking they're above the law. You are not.
We have time for one more speaker, and then I want to hear from the representative of the comptroller very quickly. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Sid Sandstrom. Before I came to the meeting, I read through the codes of the Coffey County. I'm concerned that perhaps the mayor does not understand the purpose of the Planning Commission according to the county codes. It says that the Planning Commission is to rule on codes whether somebody's in violation or in accordance with the codes. From the letter that I heard, and I heard you tonight say that the Planning Commission had not been proactive in creating jobs or promoting industry. That's not the purpose of the codes.
You heard nothing to the such, sir. I said, they have to plan for where the government's going to grow. How are we going to build roads? How are we going to, where are we going to put future schools? That's what they should also be doing. The state's land use plan says they should be doing that.
According to the county codes, the Planning Commission is to rule on whether something is in compliance with the codes or not in compliance with the codes, not to promote industry and to be proactive in creating jobs.
I did not say the latter. The reason I want them in compliance is so we don't get sued in the future because the public deserves an objective, fair Planning Commission that's properly seated and has followed state law. And the comptroller's representative's going to come up here in a minute and refute what was said last night about we didn't have to follow state law on our Planning Commission. Your two minutes is up, sir, and.
Thank you for taking part of my time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And Brian from the. Brian, are you here from the comptroller's office still?
This is our time. You took half the time, sir. And officially, he had thirty seconds left.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Would you come to the podium? You, sir? No, no. The individual behind you from the comptroller's office. We're over public comments, sir. We just ended them. Sir, I just wanted to ask you, does our Planning Commission and other entities within Coffey County government have to first and foremost follow state laws and rules before we follow our own resolutions?
Yes, sir. The statute governs the actions of the Planning Commission as far as training and certification.
So if the state law says they must have proper certification done a certain way, they must do that. They cannot allow county rules to supersede that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item. Next item, public comments. So review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion on approval of the meeting minutes? Motion and second before us, do we have any discussion? I'm going to have you removed from the room if you continue outburst.
That's okay. I'm removing myself and your shady.
Guys, we're going to have order or we're going to have to leave the room. This is an official meeting. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on approving the minutes? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Eyes have it, fifteen, motion passes. Now we go to resolutions of memorial sympathy, proclamations and commendations, and I would like to read a proclamation for Mrs. Jane Madrell. You'll give me just a second to. I think these are very important to honor. This is a proclamation to commemorate September twenty-eighth as Mrs. Jane D. Madrell Day. Whereas this day, the twenty-eighth of September, two thousand twenty-three, is to be known countywide as Miss Jane Madrell Day, created to recognize an upstanding citizen of our community who is also one of the oldest residents of Coffey County. Whereas Miss Jane Madrell is a delightful lady who made an impact on those who learned from her home economic skills. She's the proud mother of one son, Alfred, as well as a doting grandmother and great grandmother. Miss Madrell was born and raised on a dairy farm in Maryville, Tennessee, moving away as a youngster. She returned to Tennessee where she completed high school after living in California for six years. Whereas Miss Madrell earned her home economics degree from UT Knoxville in nineteen forty-five, then taught in surrounding counties but considered Tullahoma Home. She was the food service director for the city of Tullahoma from nineteen seventy until she retired. Her home church is First Presbyterian Church on Grundy Street. Now therefore, be it resolved at aye, Judd Matheny, mayor of Coffey County, do proclaim the twentieth day of September as Mrs. Jane D. Madrell Day, and it happens to also be her hundredth birthday. So if we could have, we have a motion and a second on her proclamation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. To honor Miss Madrell, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those vote no. Eyes have it, thank you. Okay, next, we have some certificates of recognition for some soldiers that.
Mr. Chairman.
I might call point of order.
Yes, sir.
Call them point of order. We did not vote on that just now. We voted on, we voted on approving the, the minutes, and then we, when you just got done reading that, you called for a vote, and we didn't, I never saw anything come up on my screen.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second on Miss Madrell then? That's what I thought. There was a motion in a second. We were ready.
We were in the process when you started, when you moved on to the next one. It was in the process of voting.
We have a motion. Mr. Stubblefield, did you second it? Okay. Okay, now do we have any discussion on Miss Madrell? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, fifteen, thank you. Now I would like to come in here and recognize these recruits very quickly. All right, next is number nine, elections, appointments and confirmations. We have a parliamentarian to choose. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Mr. Joe Pettigo if he would continue to serve.
Mr. Pettigo is nominated.
I would second.
We have a second. Do we have any additional nominations? Do we have any? Yes, sir.
I make a motion, nomination ceased.
Nominations have ceased, and Mr. Pettigo, you win by acclamation. But we'll go ahead. He, he does a fantastic job. Okay, let's do it on the machine, make it absolutely perfect. We could get a motion and a second. We had. Motion and second, and nominations have ceased. Does anybody need to discuss anything? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those opposed vote no. Who are you in, sir? He's great about taking phone calls at any time. Next are the committees. If you remember in September, we asked about if anybody wanted to change any committees. Nobody said no. So what we're voting on is to keep the comprehensive committee list as it is. That's in your packet. There's no changes whatsoever. It's just codifies what we have now. It's just codifies what we have now. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, we had a motion. Now we have a motion in a second. Now do we have discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Next is uh, Policies and Procedures Committee. We will have an addition here. Um, Register of Election, Andy Farah, um, has been chosen by that committee. Um, we had one individual that had to leave. Mr. Farah has accepted the responsibility and the opportunity, but we need to officially approve that. So we have a motion in a second to add Mr. Andy Farah to the Policies and Procedures Committee. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is approval of our two judicial commissioners. If you recall, the process is, uh, they'll be interviewed by sheriff, DA, uh, members of the law enforcement committee, myself, supervisor over judicial commissioners. Then uh, they'll be chosen by the law enforcement committee, which then will forward them to us for hiring. And we're, we need these two folks, two very good candidates. Uh, we're very fortunate to have both of these individuals, Courtney Zeitler and Katrina Von McGee Lester. Uh, are either one of you here would like to stand up? See you both in the back. Thank you very much. So we uh, we need to vote to hire them as judicial commissioners. Do I have a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, ladies, and welcome aboard. It's a very important position. Okay, uh, go to unfinished business very quickly. Animal shelter update. Tom Rice family, and Tom and Karen Rice here in Coffey County donated three acres of land to us, prime property valued at two hundred ninety thousand dollars, um, on Highway forty-one to build a new animal shelter. We are in the process of, and we have the deed to that. We're in the process of cleaning that property now and getting it prepared to be bush hogged and mowed. And uh, we have an RFQ out for an architect right now. As you know, the county has put a half a million dollars aside for it, and I have commitments of another million to go with that in donations that will come in throughout the construction process. And I will continue to raise money for that shelter for additional things. So it's coming along quite well. And uh, next is Health Department Construction Status. I had a meeting today to brief the Health Committee on that. Uh, we did award an architect for that job to Saint John Engineering, and uh, they will be rendering their architectural plans to us in conjunction with working with the state and some other entities. At that time, the capital outlay committee, I'm sure, will, will do their due diligence, and then they'll decide when and where to put it out for bid. And uh, then we can actually start the construction process. Uh, budget's close to five million dollars. In the meantime, we are adding on to the parking lot of the Tullahoma facility. Making sure, because Cedar Lane is being widened, Wilson, and uh, Wilson's being widened, they lost about two-thirds of their parking lots. We're having to build about fifteen or eighteen new parking spaces. Uh, Rick with our maintenance department is heading that up, and uh, that's coming along quite well. But we're going to have to use that facility for a couple more years and before the new ones built. But it's, it is coming along very well. Uh, next is serving the county rural residents with water services. Um, I've met with Manchester City, Tullahoma City, Wartrace, Hillsville, and West Warren Vaola, and discussed different ways that we can get water out to more of our rural residents. Uh, we had about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in pipe that the commission purchased some time ago. Manchester City has used that in the rural areas. I asked them for an accounting of that pipe, and I received it in about ten minutes in a very nice document. It was very well audited, and uh, have, have zero um, reason to believe that all that pipe wasn't used for its proper purposes. Um, this commission will need to begin in earnest looking at ways to continue that service, buying additional pipe, creating opportunities with existing utilities in order to get the water out there. Most of the utilities I spoke with, of course, they're looking for grants, uh, other types of money to help them put that pipe in the ground. West Warren Vaola is now looking at a location, and I've been riding around with them some, for another water tower to serve more of the Beach Grove area so we can supplant some of the Wartrace system out there that's not very good and, and get better pressure out there and get our flows up on water. And um, Commissioner Morse has been a great help in talking with these folks and, and helping me plan that, and uh, and I really appreciate that. And uh, but we, we got a long way to go to, to serve our rural residents. It takes a, a lot of planning to do that, so we're working on it. Does anybody else have anything to add to those? Go to new business. Uh, eleven B Personnel Manual Approvals. We have to officially vote to make Juneteenth a holiday. I believe it was approved by Legislative and Policies and Procedures. We need to put it in our books, so we need to vote officially on eleven B, aye. Need a motion in a second, please. Motion is second before us, properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is to ratify our entire Coffey County government holiday schedule for two thousand twenty-four. You have that in your packet also. These are the ones that we will officially recognize. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Mr. Nettles, you're open. Carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to budget approvals. We have uh, school budget amendments. They're in your packet, eleven C. Aye, one, two, and three, and four. First one we'll vote on is number one four one, two oh two four dash three. We have a motion. We have a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. Before we do, Ms. Marianna, do you have anything to add?
No, if there's not any questions, I don't.
Thank you. We're prepared to vote then. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Next is item two, Budget Amendment one four one dash two zero two four dash four. We have a motion. We have a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is number three, item number one four one dash two zero two four dash five. The motion is second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries, and the final one is one four one dash two zero two four dash six. Motion's for us? Properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Now we are going to... Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're going to uh, aye, aye, number one on the next page, Budget Amendments, General Capital Projects Fund, number one seven one dash two zero two four dash zero four. We have a motion. We have a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Next is number two, Budget Number one oh one dash two zero two four dash zero six, Fund One Oh One and the General Fund.
Can I ask a question? Marianna, are, have all of these with, dealing with our budget, have they been run through budget and finance? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
These are all approved on November second.
We have a motion in second, properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Next is uh, number one oh one, two zero two four dash zero five, Recovery and Prevention Court. This is standing uh, up, what used to be the Drug Court, now being called the Recovery Court. It is not going to be a nonprofit five oh one C three. It'll be a county entity. At the same time, we are standing up the Anti-Drug Coalition again, so we can get back into the schools and get back into the community with our messages. This money comes from the opioid abatement fund. It is not county money. It, we're asking for two hundred thousand dollars out of that fund, which we have, uh, how much? About three hundred and something?
Two hundred and ninety-seven.
Two hundred and ninety. So we're asking for two hundred of it for a two-year cycle, and the state of Tennessee, in my negotiations, has agreed to give us an additional hundred thousand dollars a year recurring. So this gives us two hundred thousand dollars a year to stand up both entities. They're going to share staff, share directors, and share office space. So that's what this does, and there's no uh, county money involved in these.
With the, with the old Drug Court, is the county on the hook for any of that?
I'll let uh, Mr. North answer that.
The, the Drug Court Foundation, the old Drug Court Foundation, um, is, it's its own entity. So what we are talking about is something that is not within that entity. So we are not tying on to any of their liabilities, if you will.
Okay, so if there's a judgment against them, Coffey County's not liable for the damages?
No. Yeah, I, I gather, I gather your question, but no.
Yes, sir. We, we, we made sure that there would be clear severance. We didn't even want the same name. The whole concept was agreed upon by all three school systems, all of our judges and our DA. Everyone agreed on this plan.
We've just separated ourselves now from what used to be...
Completely, yes, sir.
The liability from the old Drug Court, whatever may happen in court, does not fall back to us to be responsible.
Correct, and we have full control over it. I have asked the law enforcement committee to be the one to oversee the two. And uh, so Commissioner Chairman DeFord has said, okay, so they will report quarterly to the law enforcement committee, both entities, um, so that way we'll be able to stay in very close touch with them.
Yes, sir. I've worked on that a lot.
Yes. So we have a motion in a second. We had some discussion. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. I anticipate sometime in uh, first quarter of next year, both of them should be fully functional. And once the state money starts rolling in, we're going to try and earnest in January to start standing them up. Next one's number four, one eighteen dash two oh two four dash zero seven, Ambulance Service Fund. This is an attempt to help recruit more EMTs and paramedics. It's a chronic problem. Uh, I've visited many counties and talked to them about the issues. I've been to county mayor, association meetings. Everybody's having a tough time with recruiting and retention. So we, I'd like to get Commissioner Stubblefield. But I would, Commissioner Stubblefield, would you just address very quickly why we're doing this?
Well, I will, Mr. Mayor, but this is a different... This is ambulance fund.
Oh, it's not the, okay.
This is, this is a different topic that we're...
All right, go ahead and just talk about this one then, since I was, I was going to tuition reimbursement, so.
Okay, this is about budget finance. It's pa, has passed this. This is for funding to have a maintenance agreement with Stryker Company for the maintenance of our cots, our power cots, um, and various equipments, our, our cardiac, cardiac monitors and things like that. It's gotten to the point where we're going over our budget, uh, our line item budget with these things, and a maintenance agreement seems more feasible than, than doing what we're, what we've been doing.
Okay, so you've heard the explanation. Do we have a motion in a second? Motion is second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is uh, number one seven one dash two zero two four dash zero eight, Rural Capital Projects Fund. It's in your packet. Entertaining a motion in a second for any discussion? We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Next is Triple I, which is the Manchester Library Grant Requests. First one is for six thousand dollars for nourishing minds. Need a motion in a second for any discussion? Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed vote no. Motion carries. Triple I, number two, is a twenty thousand dollar Library Transforming Communities Grant. Have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. We have no grants to vote on tonight for us. We do have notaries to approve, and they're in your attachment. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the notaries? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Next is G, Resolution Number two zero two three dash twenty-two. It's rezoning of three zero zero four Murfreesboro Highway owned by Jose Cruz from RS1 to C2. This property is designated as a portion of tax map zero eight. The Manchester Regional Planning Commission sends this with positive recommendation. Do we have a motion? We have a second, and we have someone for discussion. Chairman Hunt.
I just wanted to remind everybody how the, even though this property lies in rural Coffey County, it is within the urban growth boundary of Manchester, which means it's, this request goes to the Manchester's Cities Planning Commission first. And as our chairman has stated, it did get forwarded to us with positive recommendation. And they held a public hearing at their facility for this.
Thank you for that explanation. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Next is H, Rezoning Request of Fifty-four Twenty-three McMenville Highway. Open for discussion and a vote. We have a motion. We have a second. We have discussion. Chairman Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is also a rezoning of property that lies entirely within the rural area of Coffey County. This because a planning commission meeting was canceled. The applicant automatically was proved because it was not addressed by our planning commission in the amount of time, I think it's thirty days if I'm not mistaken. If it's not addressed by our planning commission, it automatically comes to us. So I just want to explain how that works. We did have a public hearing. There was absolutely no objections to this by any neighbors. It was properly advertised as well. So it does need to be passed.
And it came with a positive recommendation from our code department. So we've had some discussion. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Next is Resolution Two Zero Two Three dash sixteen, Coffey County Commission Meeting Dates for Calendar Year 2024. They're in your packet. They state all the regularly stated meetings that we will have. Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is our Strategic Plan for 2024 and 2029. To vote acceptance or not, I'll just throw this out there first. Two of the people that worked on this very hard, I know there are some commissioners in here that did too, but the actual author of it, Commissioner Seaborn and Commissioner Morris are not here to explain a lot of the things within it. So it's up to this commission, but it may be why you have it. It's the one they want to have. If you want to go ahead and adopt it, we can. If you'd like to wait until they can be here to explain it fully, we can do that too. It'd be your discretion. I can entertain a motion to adopt it. Motion? Properly seconded? Any discussion? They did a good job planning on it, and we'll take a vote now. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Now we're to the one I was talking about, Commissioner Stubblefield, the Paramedic Critical Care Medic, AEMT, and Basic EMT School Funding Discussion and Vote. If you would, we have a motion and a second. Address that, please.
Okay, this is a, this went through policy and procedures and budget and finance, and it's passed. And what it is, if it's, say, EMS harm somebody and they need to go and they want to put them through school, or if they're already working and want to upgrade from an EMT to a paramedic, the county will pay for their schooling. In return, you know, they'll have to sign a contract for their paramedic to work for two years, EMT to work for one year. But the county will fund their schooling. And if they leave in between times, it's prorated.
There's a callback if they leave before they...
Right, if they leave in between, if they hadn't served out their contract, it'd be prorated to...
That's great work all these committees did in putting this together. This is a great tool to help us recruit. And we can't stress how important training is, and we cannot. So we'd like to be able to give that to them. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Now we are, reports from committees. Now, as always, all the minutes from all of our meetings are in your packet. Committee Chairman or someone here from the committee, you have plenty of time to talk about what you'd like to talk about, or we can just refer it to your minutes. The first will be Budget and Finance. Chairman Seaborn's not here, but Chairman Hunt.
I'm Vice Chairman of that, and that was the first time I oversaw that meeting. It's pretty complicated. So if you would, please defer to minutes for that meeting.
Health, Welfare, and Recreation, Chairman Hollinsworth.
Yes, I would like to refer everybody to the minutes. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 28th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, and you did a great job helping out with Halloween too with your committee. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hobbs, you did a great job on that too. Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Ford.
You can refer to the minutes. We had a special called meeting last Thursday to approve the two new judicial commissioners. Our next meeting tentatively will be December 14th at 4:30.
Thank you. Beer Board, any business? No business? Capital Outlay, Chairman Hunt.
Please review our minutes.
They're doing a lot of work. Policies and Procedures.
Yes, I'd like to refer to our minutes, and also we'll have our next meeting on November the 20th, which is next Monday. And the, our secretary has asked that we remind all the heads of their committees to please forward who your secretary is of your committee to her. So when we have a piece of legislative document that's been passed, and it gets passed on to the next body, that we're having problems with that being done, and if she has a list of all the secretaries of each committee, that'll smooth that out.
Thank you, sir. Industrial Board, anybody here to report? In your minutes. Another group doing a lot of hard work. Strategic Planning, I guess Chairman Hollinsworth, you may have to address that.
I'd like to defer that over to Dennis on Strategic Planning.
I didn't hear you. You're looking at me, but I didn't hear you.
Strategic Planning, do you have anything for it?
We adopted their plan tonight.
Oh, the strategic...
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the strategic planning. I'll need to mention that our Chairman of Strategic Planning, Lynn Seaborn, is sitting with his very ill wife at Vanderbilt, and all of us need to keep him and his prayers and her. And he, this, I think we're going to hold off presenting this because he and Claude Morris worked so hard on it. Would that be appropriate when, I'm not sure when we actually presented that full plan, but can you...
I think that is appropriate to let them do it. We could maybe do it in January. But you do have it in your packet. You can go ahead and read it, and we can adopt it as general guidelines for this county's movement.
I would like to let Commissioner Hollinsworth read that. He's easier to listen to than I am.
Yes, okay, Chairman Lynn Seaborn called the meeting to order at 5:30 p.m. The agenda for this meeting was to be reviewed and finalized goals and recommendations for the strategic plan. An update list of goals and recommendations reviewed in the previous meetings was presented. The committee continued to review the goals and recommendations, and suggestions for updates were made. Chairman Seaborn proposed at the next meeting, he would write a draft on the strategic plan, incorporate goals and recommendations discussed. There being no other business, the meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Next is any planning commission. Chairman Hunt.
Which one are we on?
Aye, Twelve Aye Planning Commission.
Oh, the Planning Commission, we have nothing to report.
Next, Board of Zoning Appeals, J. Commissioner Hunt.
No business.
Purchasing Property Sales Committee, Commissioner Hollinsworth.
Nothing to report at this time.
Ambulance Authority, Chairman Stubblefield.
You can look at the minutes. Nothing to report, except we have a meeting Thursday at 5:00 o'clock, Conference Room One.
Thank you. Joint Economic and Community Development Board, we have nothing to discuss, but we're going to have a meeting very soon. And I want to go over our strategic plan with them at that time. We're probably actually going to move that meeting out a week, right, to December?
Yes.
We're actually going to move it to early December. We'll send notices out. Investment Committee had no activity. Solid Waste Board, Chairman Hunt.
That's what I've been preoccupied with here, trying to find our minutes, because I wanted to remind everybody when we approved our county's official holiday calendar. Our sanitation board tries to adjust our holidays, so people with all the gift wrapping and ribbons that need to be thrown away, you'll see that our convenience centers may have the different hours in the holidays. Do, Commissioner Nettles, do you have the calendar dates in front of you? My file's full of stuff, but I just can't find that one. Anyway, it's just worthy to note, our convenience centers do not operate exactly on the same holiday schedule as all other Coffey County businesses. Thank you.
But they do update their website regularly. Yes, you can find any changes.
Correct, it would be posted.
Legislative Committee, Chairman Morris obviously is not here. Who would like to address Legislative Committee?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're trying to get all those things that Mr. Morris, Chairman Morris, had.
Yes.
So we're reorganizing and bringing those things, make sure that the agenda is brought. We have another meeting on the 27th.
Yes, you have a lot going on right now, I know, and I'm sure you'll get organized again. Rural Roads and Bridges.
No business to report.
IT Committee, no activity. Nine One One Board, Chairman Stubblefield.
No activity. You can read the minutes. We have a meeting December the 20th, Wednesday, at 5:00 o'clock.
Audit Committee had no activity. EMA Homeland Security, Chairman Hollinsworth.
No, sir. We don't have anything going on, but we will meet in the month of December.
And I am, I guess, Chair of the Regional EMA Group, and we're working on now how to disperse what major federal funds we get for that, but we're working on that. Wayside Wastewater Authority, anybody here from Wastewater Authority? They're doing a great job getting that balance down fast. Nobody here. Library Board. In your minutes, Rose Lanham and Manchester. Election Commission, do we have any updates? County Board of Equalization had no activity. Coffey County Highway Commission. Be in your minutes. Public Records Commission, be in your minutes. Moving to number 13, do we have any statements or announcements? Seeing none, our next meeting, stated meeting, will be January 9th, 2024. Before we adjourn, do we have any discussion about anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, we're adjourned.